Okay, good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for October 25th, 2016. We scheduled tonight's meeting to interview three finalists for the position of Town Administrator. One of the three finalists, Blythe Robinson, informed us this afternoon of her decision to withdraw her name from consideration due to her selection last night by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Wellesley for its Executive Director position. On behalf of our board, I spoke with Ms. Robinson to thank her for participating in Milton's search process and to wish her well in her new position with the Town of Wellesley. Ms. Robinson's interview was scheduled for 6:30 PM. Therefore, the board will be in recess until 7:30 PM, at which time we will interview finalists, Anthony Marino at 7:30 and Michael Dennehy at 8:30. We are now in recess. All right, we're back in session. And on our agenda this evening are interviews of two finalists for the position of Town Administrator who have been recommended by the Town Administrator Search Committee, Michael Dennehy and Anthony Marino. At our meeting on October 18th, members of the Search Committee discussed the extensive and thorough process that they followed. And the board would like to thank all of the members of the Search Committee, Eugene Boylan, Chairman, Joseph Reardon, Secretary, Frank Davis, April Lamarrue, Robert Milt, Richard Neely, Mary Rife, and Michael Gillette, Town Administrator for the Town of Westwood, who provided very valuable assistance to the Search Committee. We appreciate the time and effort that the members of the Search Committee contributed to assist the Board of Selectmen in making what is its most important decision, the selection of our next Town Administrator. We've all had the opportunity to conduct some due diligence of the finalists, including reviewing their resumes and talking with members of the Search Committee. As recommended by Mr. Gillette through Chair Boylan and as discussed at our October 18th meeting, I chose to meet and greet the finalists in person through informal conversations. Tonight, we have set aside one hour for each interview, and we will take a five-minute break between the interviews. We have scheduled at the end of our agenda a time for discussion and possible selection of a candidate. At our October 18th meeting, we had some discussion of whether to make a selection tonight after interviewing the finalists, but our discussion was inconclusive. Speaking as one member of the board, my preference continues to be that we adjourn the meeting after the interviews are completed, take time during the coming week to discuss the matter, and make a decision on November 2nd. But I want to ask my colleagues for their thoughts on this process.
So I, you know, I've thought about this a little bit over the last few days and, you know, now especially with two candidates coming in front of us tonight, you know, if, you know, we go into session, I believe there's a clear-cut person or we all happen to agree, then I think we should decide on that. If not, I think that we could potentially deliberate a little bit more. But I'd like to make that decision sooner than later, if possible.
Yeah, same thought process that, you know, if there's clearly one candidate that, you know, outshines the others, then, and there's a consensus amongst all of us, and I don't see any reason why we couldn't make a decision tonight. But if there's, if that's not the case, then I think, yeah, we should think about it.
Okay, I was hoping what we could do is tell the candidates that definitively that we would or would not be doing that tonight, so that if they, if they should ask that, we'd be able to give them some guidance up front. But it sounds like we have, if I'm hearing you correctly, when you said earlier, David, do you mean tonight or schedule a special meeting before?
No, no, I mean, I mean tonight. If there was a clear-cut, you know, decision, if one had differentiated themselves more so than the other, then I would be more inclined to making the decision tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, same.
Okay, so I guess we'll have to have that discussion at the end of the meeting and see what we think. Okay, then why don't we bring in Mr. Marino? Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Have a hot seat.
Good evening, Mr. Marino.
I am familiar with it. All right, Tom Hurley. Nice to meet you, Tom.
Nice to meet you. David Burns, nice to meet you.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Tom. Thank you for coming in tonight.
No problem, thank you for having me.
Okay, so our first candidate is Anthony Marino, Assistant Town Manager for the Town of Hanover. Thank you, Mr. Marino, for applying for the position of Town Administrator and participating in our search process. We've set aside one hour for the interview. Each of us will ask questions, and we encourage you to take your time in answering them. Towards the end of the hour, we'll set aside five to 10 minutes for you to ask us any questions that you may have or to provide any additional information that you'd like to bring to our attention.
Sure.
So the first question is, please discuss your experience and major accomplishments, why you were interested in the Town Administrator position, and why you believe you're the most qualified candidate for the position.
Sure. First part of that question was major accomplishments.
And experience.
Yes. I started in Hanover originally as the Building Commissioner. In perfect time, perfect place, I worked my way up there in the middle of going through something similar to Ms. Milton is right now and changing the government's style. They went from a Town Administrator to Town Manager, former government. And when they did that, they created a Community Services Department, which encompassed Department of Municipal Inspections, which included planning, health, conservation. And the Building Department, it also included John Curtis Library, the Council on Aging, the Veterans Department, and the Park and Rec Department. When they created that, they put me in charge of that department on the Town of Hanover. And slowly, shortly after that, it became the Assistant Town Manager position because we realized that that's really what that department head was doing for the town. One of my greatest accomplishments, I think, there would be the creation of that department and the fact that we started from scratch. We didn't have any policies and procedures in place. We started that department from the ground up. I was in the Department of Municipal Inspections, but we had to coordinate with not only the library and the library trustees, you know, the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Council on Aging Board. I had to, it was a change in the government and a change in the fact that they no longer had control of day-to-day operations. So we had to work with those boards and the staff members to incorporate them into the Community Services Department, you know, make it an integrated department that worked well together. And I'm proud to say today it does quite well, so. Second part of that question was?
Why you were interested in the Town Administrator position and why you believe you're the most qualified candidate for the position.
I believe I'm the most qualified candidate based on my eight years of experience in Hanover. With the experience with the change in government and what Milton's about to go through with taking on a strong Town Administrator, which is very similar, I feel like that experience really puts me leaps and bounds ahead of maybe another candidate because I've already lived through this process once. I've seen the, some, you know, some pushback that you're going to get from committees, and I've also seen the good that comes of it by creating efficiencies, being able to streamline things, maybe reorganize some departments and do things, you know, better with, you know, more with less, I guess, which is sort of what we're all striving for and as we try to create a sustainable government here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
David.
Anthony, like many municipalities, Milton is always under pressure to deliver a high quality of service to its residents. Strategic planning at both the departmental level and the general government level can be a very effective tool to accomplish efficiencies and to ensure the delivery of service. Please discuss your thoughts on any experience that you may have in strategic planning, consolidation, and regionalization, and how you might implement those principles in order to provide greater efficiencies and economies, especially cost-saving measures in the delivery of municipal services. So I can go back over that if you need.
Sure, no problem. I'll take the first part of that, the strategic planning. I've been involved in strategic planning for the last three years in Hanover. It's done on a yearly basis with the Board of Selectmen. Basically, they've set aside a meeting just for strategic planning, get the Board of Selectmen in the room. Everybody sort of uses that, you know, easel idea, we throw out ideas, jot them down, tape them up on the wall, and as the policy, as the procedure, you know, tends to go through, those sort of get put into categories and, you know, whether it's economic development or the School Department and, you know, looking at Town Hall, police, fire, all the areas that we want to work on, then they sort of get brought, broken down into categories. And what the end of it, we end up with some measurable strategic goals and objectives for the department heads and the Town Manager and here, the Town Administrator, to work on. And that sort of sets the groundwork for us, our work path for the year, you know. And then we do that on a yearly basis. I've done strategic planning also for my department in a similar fashion at the, with my supervisors, you know, for the library and the Council on Aging and the other departments. And we've been able to streamline that as well. The main goal for strategic planning, in my mind anyway, is that if you don't come out of it with measurable strategic goals, I mean, we can say we want more economic development in Milton, but what does that look like? You know, so you need to really fine-tune that down to get it down so it's measurable and attainable. And so you don't end up with this sense of hopelessness that, you know, we want this, but you don't feel like you're ever getting there. So if you set attainable goals, you can really get some progress and work towards that. And now I'll ask for the second part of that question.
Yeah, the second part of the question is, so any thoughts on your experience that you may have in consolidation and regionalization to provide greater efficiencies and economies?
Sure. I've seen the benefit of regionalization. When I first started as Building Commissioner in Hanover, neighboring town was without not only a Building Commissioner but a Health Agent. So we sort of stepped in and helped that town out. So I could, with the proper permitting software, I mean, you could set your building departments up to run with two or three towns with one Building Commissioner and then a few local inspectors. Those are things that could easily be done. Same thing could be done with, you know, the Health Department, the Board of Health and Health and Food Inspections. We've also had some talk and we see the benefit of possibly merging an ECC Department, your Emergency Communications Department. That can also be done with neighboring towns to see a cost savings there with reduction in staff and not personnel. Another option to consider there is shared services. We're looking at right now, we're working with the Town of Cohasset, sort of set up a memorandum of understanding with the town to provide planning services. We're going to sort of farm out our town planner for Cohasset's going to benefit, they'll get some town planning hours, and they'll pay the Town of Hanover a stipend for that. Similar things can be done here. There's all sorts of ways. Regionalization is going to be necessary for, you know, to maintain our, as you said in the beginning, the level of service that not only our residents but business owners demand from us. And if we don't do that, it's going to be harder and harder to maintain our budgets and stay within the tax levy.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on?
Yes.
One of those questions. Anthony, in terms of the regionalization, you'd mentioned that you were involved in a couple of regionalizations for building the inspectional services. And how much pushback was there from the various entities in power at the time? And how'd you deal with that?
It was a trial run, now that we did it. And the pushback is, you know, everybody thinks they can do it better. So, you know, the home rule always comes into effect in Massachusetts.
Right.
You know, we want to keep it in-house, we want to do it ourselves. But I think we, you know, this happened to be a neighboring town that I grew up in, so it was a little bit easier to make that connection and to make that fit. But I think as long as you can show the efficiencies and shows that the work level stays up, you know, in the Building Department, say, the builders are getting the inspections they want in a timely fashion, the zoning enforcement's happening, you know, you're not, you're going to get minimal pushback because nobody wants to, you know, go to the residents and ask for more money. You don't want to have to go and do an override or ask for another dead exclusion. So anything you can do to avoid that, I think there's, you know, more and more as you move along, you'll see more and more towns agreeable to that. And you're starting to see it now. I mean, we're, even our fire department years ago wouldn't discuss the option of maybe regionalizing or looking at shared services, but now they're seeing the benefit of it, especially when it comes to mutual aid and, you know, being able to cover for each other, so.
Sure, okay. And then just one other quick question. In terms of strategic planning, most of what you talked about was strategic planning at the top level.
Sure.
But can you, can you speak a little more to the departmental level? Because, I mean, that's really where the services get delivered and the efficient delivery of those services, I think, is.
Sure. That all starts and ends with customer service. One thing I strived to do and was successful at when I started in Hanover was improve the customer service throughout the entire department, and we've done that. You know, there's never a time when somebody walks to the counter where somebody's not jumping out of a chair to come up and tend to the person at the counter. And that starts there. And also, you need to, strategic planning is great for that, but they, like I said, the employees need to know that there's a target and there's a goal. And what we've done there is we've taken actually employees out of the union, three of them to be in fact, and we've made them Assistant Conservation Agents and Assistant Health Agents, you know. And obviously, part of that job is still an administrative role, but it also allows them to be trained to go out and do food inspections, to, you know, go out and do wetland, flag wetlands and do, you know, things with conservation. And we've also, the other position we created was an Executive Administrative Assistant, you know, in my department, you know, for the Assistant Town Manager. So by having career growth and for them to see that they're involved, you know, with the growth of the department and the end game, you know, which is customer service and trying to create efficiencies, I've gotten a lot of great ideas from my staff members, you know, to streamline things. So it's really worked out well.
Good.
Tom, you have the third question.
Yes. So the Town Administrator is charged with presenting a town-wide budget to the Warrant Committee annually. As you're probably aware, there are four major departments in Milton, schools, library, cemetery, and parks, that are not under the control of the Town Administrator. Secondly, there are numerous approaches to budgeting such as top-down, bottom-up, level service, zero-based, and incremental, and a few. In Milton, we currently use, I guess, what I can best describe as a bottom-up incremental cost approach in our operating budgets. So what I would like you to do is just, please describe your preferred approach to budgeting and what you believe the benefits to that approach is. Also, explain if you've had any experience in budgeting when there is lack of control over certain departments and how you managed to build a consensus such that you can craft an operating budget that is both fair and addresses the needs of the town as a whole as well as the individual departments. And if you've never dealt with such a thing, you know, how might you go about dealing with that consensus building?
Sure. First part of that question I can answer. I'm a firm believer in the zero-based budgeting, you know, starting from scratch, breaks, you know, prove every line item. That's really the best way to do it. That's what we did for the last three years in Hanover. So you don't get, you know, you tend to see, when I was first started there, there'd be a lot of, oh, that's always a line item, we just sort of carried it over and carried it over. That doesn't happen anymore. You know, every line item gets broken down. So the zero-based budgeting has worked for us, and I'm a firm believer in it. It's allowed us to really cut things down and see what we're spending, you know, and not just having those line items carry over and, you know, well, we'll just, you know, certify more free cash, which is important. But, you know, we can do that through increased receipts and things like that as well. As far as having no control, I would say our biggest example would be the School Department. Now, we don't have control of the School Department even with the Town Manager Act. So that's all about building relationships and communication. You know, we have weekly meetings with the School Superintendent. We know what the School Superintendent's needs are, he knows what our needs are, and we work a plan together. And you have to do the long-term planning. You know, we need the five-year capital plan. We need the five-year budget plan. You know, I mean, some of the line items obviously are adding percentages, but by pushing that budget out, you sort of know where the needs are and what's coming down the pike. And also, on the lower level, just having weekly meetings with the Police Department, the Fire Department, you know, the DPW Director, understanding what their needs are, there's never any surprises. We know what they're going to need. You know, you know if you need to buy a new pickup truck, you know if you need a new ladder truck for the Fire Department. Those things are coming down. So by having those plans in place, understanding where you're at with budgeting, it's really, you shouldn't have any trouble presenting a balanced budget. And, you know, then you get down to now do you provide, if you have a budget crunch or you're up against it with limited taxes, you're going to look at maybe, do you do level service versus level, you know, you know, level-based, you know, zero-based, level-based budget, sorry. I obviously, from a, you know, from a department head, would prefer a level service because it allows you to honor your, you know, your contracts and maintain the same level of service. But we've certainly done, my first two years there, we did level-funded budgets, which was hard. And from a manager's standpoint, to go to your staff members and, you know, say, you know, we've got to take zero for two years. You know, that's something we had to do, something I had to deal with as a manager. You know, so what we tried to do is we tried to improve it on some, maybe some employee benefits, offer additional time off, you know, they can earn additional comp time, throw some other benefits out there. We offered flex spending accounts. You know, it was a minimal expense to the town, but it was a great benefit for the employees to be able to have some tax-free spending, you know, for medical things and things they use all the time. So basically, I mean, to wrap that all up, I would say zero-based budgeting is what I believe in. And as far as reaching out to the other departments, again, constant communication with the departments that aren't under, you know, the Town Administrator's control with regard to the library, Water Enterprise Fund, schools, and those one-on-one.
Actually, Water Enterprise you were under control, but yeah, it's library, cemetery, parks, and schools, yeah.
So again, constant communication with those departments, so they understand the budgeting needs, we understand theirs, and so there's no surprises when they present their budget.
Mr. Marino, the next question is, Milton obtained special legislation that increased the management responsibility and authority of the Town Administrator. So please discuss, number one, your understanding of the role of the Town Administrator and the role of the Board of Selectmen. And number two, if you were to become the next Town Administrator, how would you communicate and interact with the board?
Sure. I would say, given your new former government, the role of the Town Administrator is to run the day-to-day operations of the town. I understand that now is hiring responsibilities regard to Fire Chief, Police Chief, and I would assume that would be with Board of Selectmen sign-off. Obviously, those candidates would be brought to the Board of Selectmen. As far as communication.
Well, actually, just to, just to clarify, the Town Administrator has the authority to hire those positions. There's a veto right that the board would have within a certain timeframe.
That's what I thought I read, yeah.
That might be what you're referring to.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
But if there's no veto, then it is the Town Administrator's sole decision, yes.
Right. And obviously, those positions, being the major positions, wouldn't be hired without consultation with the board and, you know, communication with the board. That's worked in Hanover, and that's just the way I would do things. As far as constant, I keep what I like to refer to as a weekly log report, and it's not a lot, it's a daily bulleted item list of things that happened during the day. Resident came in to complain about a water main break, met with the Fire Chief, you know, all those things, and they're little bulleted items, and I submit, would submit that to the board members on a weekly basis. So the board would never be surprised. You'll never be surprised on my watch, you'll always, open line of communication, you'll always get emails. We currently use, and, you know, we could try to look to implement that here, is a, an open dashboard kind of a thing where, you know, you can document share, we can just load them up. So rather than having to send an email out with all the PDFs and the agendas and everything to the board members before weekly meetings, it would all be loaded up onto a document share program, so you'd have all that at your fingertips and you can look at that. That's been fairly beneficial and cut down on admin time in the office as far as preparing books and everything else. But I would say you'll always be communicated with, there'll never be any surprises, any sort of complaints or emails, I'll always have constant communication with the board members, and that will be on a weekly basis. And if there's any questions, obviously, I think you meet every two weeks.
Yes.
First and third, Tuesday.
Usually, yeah.
Usually.
Yeah. So, and then there'd obviously be communication before those meetings, but you'll never be surprised. It'll be constant between emails and then getting my weekly log. And anything major that comes up, you'll always be in the loop.
And just, could I just follow up on that question before we go to the next? When you said that in the context of hiring a department head, you'd have some consultation with the board, could you just expand on that a little bit more in what form that may take and what you might have in mind?
Sure. I would say I would inform the board of the finalists, probably. I wouldn't, you know, if you're hiring the Police Chief, you'd obviously wean it down, similar to what you'd be there with the Screening Committee. We'd wean it down to the final three or four candidates, send those resumes up to the board for them to review, and then let them know, you know, when those interviews are going to be and where we're considering it. I can say we haven't had to hire a Fire or Police Chief in Hanover, so I haven't been involved in that, you know, but we had had to hire a Finance Director. I sat in on the hiring of the Finance Director, and we invited one of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager at the time, had one of the Board of Selectmen sit in on those interviews. So, and then that person would report back, so. And we also had a member of the community, and I believe the, or a member of the Advisory Committee, which is our Finance Committee, sat in on those interviews as well. That proved to be fairly beneficial. And on my level, it's definitely beneficial when we had to hire a Health Agent, when we had to hire a Conservation Agent, I involved, and even a new VNA Director, we involved members of the board. They sat in on the interviews, they were aware of who the candidates were. You know, we would streamline it down to the two or three, do the interviews with the board members, and then, you know, present the final candidate to the board.
Okay, thank you.
As you're aware, we've gone to this strong form of government now, and we as a board have taken a policy and advisory role.
Sure.
You know, seat at the table now. And so that changes how you as a, as a Town Administrator will operate operationally. Can you just expand a little bit on your leadership style?
Sure. I am, I'm an open-door leadership sort of, not a micromanager, sort of my hands-off. I expect my department heads to be able to run their departments. I'm not going to hover over them. I'm not going to tell them how to do the job that we hired them to do. But I get an open-door policy. Anybody needs to come to me, they have an idea, they can come and see me. And I'm sort of a team builder. I want to build up my staff, I want to set them up, I want to be training my replacement, I want to be training the next replacement. I never want to have somebody not be ready to take the next step in their career. So that's more of a coach, team builder. That would be my style.
Great, thanks. Okay, I have the next question. It's a long one, so be prepared.
You have.
The advent of the internet, personal communication devices, and social media have created a new dynamic with which municipalities must deal. Information about government operations travels over the internet with lightning speed and is viewed by several thousand residents daily. Much of this information may be in part or whole misinformation. Once out there, the misinformation becomes hard to correct. Normal communication channels are slow and do not necessarily reach much of our constituency. Relatively few residents seem to subscribe or follow the town's social media sites or our website. In my opinion, it is extremely important that the town communicate information with its constituents quickly and accurately and over channels that will reach a broad base. What experience have you had with respect to misinformation getting a life of its own? How have you handled those situations? What are your thoughts on how municipalities should create and communicate with its constituents? And how have you in prior positions ensured effective communications between stakeholders, the residents, and team members both up and down the organizational chain?
Sure. The first part of that question would be, you're referring to social media, I'm sure, Facebook, Twitter, and the like. We have dealt with that, in my opinion, very effectively in Hanover. We, we've embraced the technology, we have our own Facebook page, we have our own Twitter account, Instagram account, so we're able to control the message via those. We put out blasts, you know, they get approved by the Town Manager and myself before they go out. But we'll send out the information that's correct on those, whether it's a water main being shut down or a major town meeting coming up or some sort of major event in the town. All those messages get out via that, and then everyone will jump on with the comments. But as far as misinformation, I mean, once it's out there, my general rule of thumb is to follow it but don't engage. Nothing good comes from engaging in the Facebook posts and the back and forth. But to get the message out there on your own message through the Hanover Mass, we've got a lot of likes and we've actually created a, through the, in our webpage, we've created an email list, and we're able to get, it's quite substantial now, up over three or four thousand people on that email list, and we're able to get the messages out there quickly through that. During crises and emergencies, we're able to communicate with our constituents, everyone seems to always have their phone nearby. So whether it's, you know, through sending out email blasts through our local EMA account and/or Facebook, Twitter, we would also shoot small little snippets and put them out on YouTube, you know, and have people would follow those as well, just to give people updates, what's going on, what's going on with the town, what our plans are to clear roads, this, that, and the other thing. I think the second part of that question was?
On misinformation and how you've handled that, if you have had that example.
All we can do is put out the correct information. I mean, it's really, I mean, once it's out there, like I said, I don't, we don't ever jump on the comment threads and, you know, you can try to correct it on the comment threads. You know, I sort of have a philosophy that that's not the best way to go because it seems to be, gets twisted, and it's never the right way to do it. So to have a controlled message come out on a Facebook account that's from Hanover, I have found that most people, there are a lot of reasonable people out there too, you've seen those posts copied into the misinformation posts, and it gets corrected that way. A lot of people will say, oh, by the way, I saw this on the Town or Hanover's Facebook page, and they would copy and, you know, share that inside of the misinformation post. And then that sort of shuts it down. I've seen that happen a lot. So as long as you're monitor and don't engage, that's sort of my, that is my philosophy, monitor and don't engage, but to get our message out via those same mediums but on our sites.
I guess the last part of the question is, how do you ensure effective communication to the stakeholders, be it the neighborhood groups that we have here in town? And then also, how do you then create some sort of sustainable communication up and down that organizational chain from your team members?
Sure. Team members will always be communicated through, you know, via email, memos from the office, you know, we do an all-town email. That'll be easy to control the communication within Town Hall and the School Department. But what you're referring to is relationship building. You know, we've got to build relationships with all the external and internal stakeholders. But the external's even more important. And I've been very successful at that in Hanover, and I'll continue that here in Milton, is reaching out, you know, it's taken four or five years, but I was able to build relationships with the developers, the local Realtors, the business owners, and everybody up and down Route 53, which is our economic stretch, you know, and we're seeing the benefits of that now. I mean, we were able to go out and attract a local business from Waymouth Prevu to come to town on a sort of depressed site, and they're going to move into Hanover now. So that all comes from relationship building. And the same thing with the community groups you spoke about, you know, whether it's the Local Chamber of Commerce or the, you know, the Friends of the Council on Aging, you know, by keeping an open line of communication with them and engaging with them, going to their meetings, not all the time, obviously, but, you know, in the beginning so they know you're there and you know you're there to help, and finding out how they communicate, and then, you know, piggybacking on that, that's the only way to do it, and it's all boils down to relationship building, in my mind.
Thanks.
Tom has the next question.
Okay. Anthony, as the Town in Milton now has a Town Manager, former government, with more consolidated power over the operations of the town in one individual, we realize that there will be many operating efficiencies that will follow. However, with increased operating efficiencies will also come a diminution of transparency. No longer is virtually every operating aspect of the town being discussed and decided in an open meeting. How will you deal with the balancing of the public's desire and right? consolidated power over the operations of the town in one individual, we realize that there will be many operating efficiencies that will follow. However, with increased operating efficiencies will also come a diminution of transparency. No longer is virtually every operating aspect of the town being discussed and decided in an open meeting. How will you deal with the balancing of the public's desire and right to know, and the need to increase efficiency in the operations of the town?
Sure. One thing is to get your budget out there early and often. We've got our, you know, our budgets posted on our website, easily accessible. As I said during my interviews, we recently won the GFOA budget award, very proud of our budget, I was on that team that created it. So, I can also, by getting that information out there, that's really what the only way, your avenue to do it, whether it's, you know, through the Facebook medium, by announcing that the budget's available, letting people know we're preparing the budget, here's the draft budget, keeping that out there as far as transparency with the numbers go. The other effective tool that I've utilized is a, you know, like, what we like to call a dashboard. We've got a link on the website that can pull up, and we've got all the four major, four or five major departments up there, you know, DPW, Fire, Police, Community Services, Facilities, and what it does is it takes a few or fi, you know, four or five key indicators from those departments, and we update that on a monthly basis. So for the Building Department, it's going to be, you know, number of inspections, number of permits, all of that. DPW, it's going to be number of calls, number of projects going on, number of water main breaks, things like that, Police, Fire, same thing, number of calls, calls responded to. So the public gets a snapshot of what's going on on a 30-day basis. They really seem to like that, we've got some positive feedback on that from the residents. The other thing is just getting them out to, you know, to the meetings, engaging with them. One other thing that we've done, and I'd like to try to do something similar here, is we did a community cookout, and we couched it as a community cookout, but it was also an employee appreciation day. So what we would do is we'd earmark the, you know, 25, 35 people, and maybe give them a jacket or some sort of a plaque, you know, and then the 15, 10, we'd get in a, you know, just a, sort of an achievement certificate, and we pass those out, but we recognize those employees. So you've got all the community there, but you're also recognizing some of your key employees from all the departments, DPW, Fire, Police, the whole entire town, and School Department. So it was really, those events have turned into really engage with the community, open it up, and realize that, you know, it's not so scary to go into Town Hall and ask questions and, you know, and get the answers that you need.
Okay, and the next question is, promoting commercial or mixed-use development and increasing affordable housing are important issues for the Board of Selectment and the Planning Board. However, to a large extent, Milton is a built-out community. What ideas would you offer for increasing affordable housing units or Milton's very small commercial tax base?
Your opportunities are going to be in redevelopment, you know, I know you've got a project looking at now with the old Henry's Building, you're going to have other distressed properties in town that can prime for redevelopment. What you need to do is take a hard look at where your prime redevelopment sites are going to be, and how your zoning bylaws address those areas. You know, is what you want to do, mixed-use and commercial development, is that feasible with your current zoning bylaws? And if not, we need to change them to accommodate those areas. Like you said, you have a limited commercial base, so you need to take a look at that. We're doing that now in Hanover, talking about bringing cluster zoning in, looking at, you know, maximizing the remaining land that we have, so we can do some either affordable senior housing or affordable housing. If you open up, you know, if you reach out to the developers and ask them what they need, take a look at it, you can do some overlay zoning, you know, you can, those ways of doing that are really, we've found in Hanover to be successful. We've done that with what we call the Interchange District, we already did an overlay zoning piece, we're currently working with that developer now, he's building a piece of it, and there's some more land in the back to be developed. East Milton Square is prime for redevelopment, you know, you've got a like, it's a lot of service businesses in there now, that's another area that could be redeveloped, built up, try to bring some more retail into town. You know, you've really got to take a look at your zoning bylaws though, because what I've found anyway is that that sort of tends to restrict the most. You know, a lot of them are constructed back in the 50s and the 60s, and maybe haven't been touched in certain areas since, and that really needs to be looked at, because there's opportunities that could be, be had there.
Okay, thank you. That is the end of our prepared questions, so we're running a little bit ahead of time. Why don't we give you an opportunity to ask us some questions?
Sure. One thing I wanted to elaborate a little bit on the last question was, one thing we've done, and I would like to do here, is now we did what's called an, basically, an economic development package that we created that showed why it would be great to do business in Milton, show the demographics, show the schools, and get people to come to Milton. You could send it out, and we also included in that a map of the areas that were prime for redevelopment, areas that could be redeveloped, and we sent that out to over 50 businesses. That's something I would look to do here as well, that, we've actually seen some response from that, and seen some businesses that, you know, didn't maybe realize Hanover was there, or the opportunities that were there, and have reached out to us, so that's something that, you know, is another avenue to spark economic development and growth.
Do you have any questions for us, Mr. Marino?
I guess, the only thing that didn't really get touched on, and I guess, is the relationship with the School Department and the School Committee, as far as, you know, their needs, planning that's happened at that level, I guess, you know, are the boards active together? I know how the relationships are in Hanover, but I don't know how they are here.
Somewhat. About, about a year, year and a half ago, I kind of suggested that we have a town and school, for lack of a better...
Consolidation committee.
Yeah.
Yep.
So just to look at ways that the school and town side could maybe come together from, not from a education aspect, but from a business aspect of running the schools and running the town, too. So, and that's been very successful. You know, three or four good recommendations have come out of that, and, and that, I believe that committee is still operating, is that...
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we see you've got a town-wide facilities department already, which encompasses both town and school buildings?
Yes.
When you created that, were you able to pull the custodians out of the school union contract, or are they still in?
Only to a very limited degree.
Okay.
There's just a couple of employees who came over, maintenance, to my belief, but not the custodians. But we, as Tom indicated, we do have a pretty good working relationship with the School Committee, whether in preparation of the budget, it's usually at, not so much between the boards, but the town administrator, the Assistant Superintendent for Business, so there is a lot of cooperation and work between the two, the town, the non-school departments and the School Department, at the, at the management level, as well as between the boards.
Yeah, in fact, our five-year financial forecast, the team is town accountant, the town administrator, and the business superintendent for business of the schools.
Okay, that's great, that was going to be my next question, if you've done any sort of five-year planning with them, so that's great. Okay, the other question I had is, as far as information technology, is that shared with the schools, or is that, are you both on your own for that?
That, we just formed a, I'm not even sure if it's actually been appointed yet, the Information Technology Committee. Right now, there is a town IT and there's a school IT.
Okay.
And never the twain shall meet.
Right.
But there's a desire to try and change that.
Yeah, I've had some luck with that, we've done that in Hanover, we've, we've found that, we did the facilities better, so we took over the town facility, similar to what you did here, but we found the schools did the IT better, they ran their IT department better, so we gave them the IT from the town, and created a town-wide IT department. Not only, you know, that it worked better, it also got us some points with MSBA, we scored some points with MSBA when we went for our school project, so.
I think the efficiencies between...
Absolutely.
...school and town, you know, serving a lot of the same people.
Oh, without a doubt, yeah.
It could really maximize the success rate in what you, what you actually produce on a daily basis, and especially with fields and with, you know, multiple, whether it be payroll and all kinds of human resource and things.
Yeah.
It's a very important thing to us.
Yeah, that was going to be my next point, we've also done that, we've merged a town-wide HR and payroll department. We merged with the schools and took people from both and created that department, we've definitely seen efficiencies in that and streamlined that department, so that's something I'd at least like to discuss, I think that would be a benefit.
That is something we have talked about trying to accomplish, and we...
We've talked a lot about consolidation in...
We're still at the very beginning.
...in efficiencies, and, you know, we are in the beginning of that, but it's something that I hope, you know, sometime in the near future, we can, we can move the needle on that. I know that the School Department is perhaps absolutely fabulous so far, so I think that there is great opportunity.
Okay, great.
Mr. Marino, if, do you have any other questions, or, if you do, that's fine, we have still some time?
No, I guess, next steps in the process, I don't know if you're, you know, looking to move forward and make your decision tonight, or if you're going to have a follow-up meeting, or...
Well, we just had a discussion about that, and we were indefinite, so we're going to decide that at the end of the evening.
Okay, very good.
But I can say that if it's not tonight, it will be very soon, I mean, it'll certainly be by the next meeting.
Yes, the next meeting is November 2nd.
Okay.
Which is a Wednesday evening rather than a Tuesday, Tuesday is our normal meeting.
Right.
But due to a conflict next week, we're meeting on Wednesday instead of Tuesday.
Okay, very good.
If you don't have, if you have other questions, that's fine, we have some time. If you don't, we'd like to give you an opportunity to give us any additional information you might like to do, or present a closing statement?
Sure. Any questions? Let's take a look at my notes real quick. I guess, that was, one quick question, is the board's take or the board's feeling on the changing from three to five members? How do you, thoughts on that, pros and cons? I mean, I've lived through both, so I'm just curious as to what you guys are feeling on it.
I think overall, we have a government study committee that really put that forward. We can see the benefit, I think, and, not to talk for the whole board, but we can see the benefit of five members, especially as you move from a, from a, an operating board to a policymaking board. We didn't think it was the most important thing to push forward at current time, but it's going out for, for townwide vote.
April, it'll be on the ballot in April.
On the ballot in April.
So the voters will decide.
Okay. With regard to the Charter Study Committee of the Town, you know, Government Study Committee, is that done now, or is there additional changes?
No, they're going on...
They're still looking to make, and maybe bring things forward, and shift forward?
Actually, they're meeting as we speak downstairs, so they're, they are continuing to meet, they, they've just been extended for three years, at the last town meeting, we extended them for three years, and they're still looking at a number of different ways to modernize and streamline government and create some efficiencies, so they're still, they still have a lot of work that they're doing.
Okay, great, that's good.
It's an ongoing process.
Absolutely, it never changes, so, okay. I think that's it, do you guys have any other, other questions for me?
Any other questions from the board?
I don't really.
Okay, then, would you like to offer a closing statement, or give us any additional information, Mr. Marino?
Sure. As I stated in the beginning, I, I came from the private sector, I started as a self-employed, you know, real estate and commercial developer, I got into the town government back in about eight or nine years ago. At the time, it was more about, you know, being home for my daughter, she was in high school, and, you know, being closer to home and not being traveling so much, but I sort of found what I love to do. I was in the business, and I wasn't sort of, I was, I was good at it, but I wasn't great at it, because I didn't love it, but I've found what I love to do now, and, you know, it took me till 37 years old to figure it out, but I did. So, I love municipal government, I love what I do, I love the fact that every day's different, I like being able to help people, that's, that's my philosophy, that's how I run things, and like I said, I'm a team builder, I like to build up my employees and the people I work with. I feel I'd be a great asset to the town of Milton, I really enjoy the town, I think you guys are taking great strides between creating the town, strong town administrator, former government, you're taking the steps to, in what I believe to be the necessary steps to, you know, create a sustainable government and, you know, move forward, so I would love to be your next town administrator, and I look forward to the opportunity.
I do have one additional question.
Okay, true.
You know, I'll ask it of...
We have time, so...
Okay, and I will make sure I ask it of all the candidates, but the, there is no requirement to be resident of Milton, obviously, to have this job, but your, your thoughts on, is it helpful to be a resident of the town if you're going to manage the town?
I've seen both sides of it, I do believe there is an advantage to live in the town, I think yours, you know, dealing with the same issues that your residents are dealing with, you know, the people that you work for, so I believe there is a benefit. I've also had the experience of people, you know, knocking on my door on a Sunday because they needed something, you know, and then going to the grocery store and bumping into people and things like that.
Yeah, we've all had those, yeah.
And it's all, it happens, which is fine, but no, I believe there's a benefit, and while you don't have a residency requirement, you know, where I currently live now, you know, I'm certainly, I was a long-term standing resident in Pembroke, sold my house last year, and I live in Norwell now, but that was more an investment thing, I bought the house to tear it down, build it again, and, you know, I'll be looking to get closer, you know, to Milton, I think, in the long term.
Okay, great, great.
All right, then, Mr. Marino, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your applying, and you're coming in tonight and your time with us.
All right, I look forward to hearing from you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marino. Did you get a chance to meet Ms. Martin and Ms. Fagan?
I did, thanks, thank you.
All right, it's now 8:15, and our next interview is at 8:30, so why don't we recess for 15 minutes, and we'll come back, and we'll start right at 8:30. So we are in recess. And why you believe you're the most qualified candidate for the position?
Sure. Thank you for having me here tonight, first and foremost, I'm honored to be here. So I, I think I'm the most qualified candidate, only back up, what brought me here was, I've been in local government for 20 years, I stopped at the City of Boston for a cup of coffee in 96, got my master's degree from Northeastern around 2004, and I've been there ever since. It's, it's my career, it's, it's where, where I like to work. I quickly became a civil servant, I had some tutors along the way that, that taught me some things operationally. I started with the city as a, as a budget person, I spent my first six years working on the Public Works Budget, assisting the Budget Director. My former superintendent then took me into an operational mode, I did that for about eight or 10 years, and in that capacity, it was great. So I see both sides of city government, both from, from the constituent side out in the field, I pride myself on the fact that I'm out in the field more often than I'm, I'm in City Hall behind a chair, working with the people, I understand what it takes to deliver services to constituents, it's not easy, it's something that has to be done. We've developed a pretty good system of constituent services in Boston, it's, it's a very proactive one, we can go into discussion about it later if you'd like to, but it's, it's something that I pride myself on, being able to, to engage with the constituents, whether we proactively go out into the field with technology and, and create some work for our workforce, or if we receive a request from any type of outlet, phone call, social media, stuff like that, where the constituent takes the time out of their day to engage government, we respond effectively, we always try to get to yes, sometimes no is the answer, and it's, it's a tough message to deliver, but that whole engagement process, we've been able to master by taking that last step and re-engaging the constituent. In Boston, if, if you download a certain app that we worked on for years, you can, you can then reach back out to the constituent and, and send them a picture of, of the delivered service that they requested, sometimes hours before, so. I think just, just the, my background, my, both from fiscal responsibility, working through Public Works Budget, which is north of $125 million a year, if you add in the snow budget and capital expenditures, we get some grants from time to time from the federal government, which we appreciate. So I think just, just the overall operational and, and policy and budget package that I bring to the town would be an asset.
Thank you. David has the second question.
Michael, like many municipalities, Milton is always under pressure to deliver a high quality of service to its residents. Strategic planning at both the department level and the general government level can be a very effective tool to accomplish efficiencies and ensure delivery of service. Please discuss your thoughts on any experience you may have in strategic planning, consolidation and regionalization, and how you might implement those principles in order to provide greater efficiencies in economies, especially cost-saving measures in the delivery of municipal services.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, how, how do you consolidate services to eliminate Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, how do you consolidate services to eliminate redundancies and become a more efficient?
It was first strategic planning, and then, yeah, the, the rest of it was.
Strategic planning, so we've taken a more, greater Boston approach to strategic planning. With Wind Casino popping up, we've noticed that Sullivan Square and Rutherford Avenue are, there's a lot of gateways to Boston, as there are a lot of gateways to Milton. So we're working on projects with the greater Boston area to come up with a solution to some of the transportation needs. If Wind Casino comes into town, I think 67% of the people are going to use the Alfred Street Roadbridge. There's a need to redo Rutherford Ave and Sullivan Square. It's not just Boston working on that, it's Somerville and Everett. Similarly, we worked on a package with the Town of Milton and the DCR to work through the Matapan, Matapan Square transportation problem. So it's those approaches. I know we've been just contacted by DCR and Mastart, we're working on some Morrissey Boulevard improvements, so just that whole regional approach to transportation problem. I think if, if you're looking at a town whose resources are drained year in and year out, I think you look at maybe some type of consortium, where you go out and you purchase your road salt and any materials you might need, hot top, any materials. With a consortium, you partner up with a neighboring city or town. I know in, in the late 80s, actually the late 90s, Brookline, Newton, and, I think it was just Brookline and Newton, we'd go out and, and bid on some products as, as a consortium. That way, they'd get a better price. Obviously, the, the supply companies like to sell it at a larger rate than these smaller towns demand. So getting it as a consortium can, can work to your advantage.
The second part of that question is on consolidation and regionalization, how you might implement those principles in order to provide greater efficiencies and cost-saving measures.
Okay, so one example we had of that, Boston handles 300 households of trash weekly, which is an exorbitant amount of material. Some of the neighborhoods had a three-day trash day. Downtown neighborhoods don't have the storage capacity. They were allowed to put trash out Sunday nights at 5 o'clock, Tuesday nights at 5 o'clock, and Thursday nights at 5 o'clock. Trash trucks don't get it usually till about 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So what you'd see is trash is out on the street more often than not in these neighborhoods. We, we took a regional approach to those three neighborhoods and did two things with that. We advertised a contract where we took the middle trash day away from them, thereby getting 48 hours' worth of trash off the street. We absorbed the code enforcement department from inspectional services, so the trash police would stay in front of the trash trucks, cite people for putting trash out improperly, and the trash trucks would come along. Ultimately, we just wanted to get the trash off the street and keep it off the street. So the, bringing the code enforcement group onto our sanitation team allowed us to do that a lot more efficiently, and it's much more cost-effective.
Great.
Tom has the third question.
Okay. The town administrator is charged with presenting a balanced townwide budget to the Warren Committee annually. As you're probably aware, there are four major departments in Milton, the schools, libraries, cemetery, and parks, that are not under the control of the town administrator. Secondly, there are numerous approaches to budgeting, such as top-down, bottom-up, level service, zero-based, and incremental, to name a few. In Milton, we currently use what I can best describe as a bottom-up incremental cost approach to our operating budgets. So the question in all this is, first of all, please describe your preferred approach to budgeting and what benefits that approach has over other approaches. Also explain what experiences you've had in budgeting, and when it comes, when there's a lack of control over certain departments, how you're able to build consensus, such you're able to craft an operating budget that was fair and addressed the needs of the town as a whole, as well as the individual departments. If you've never dealt with that situation, how you might go about building consensus?
Okay, I think the first part was what type of budget approach?
Budget, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we take a level-funded approach for my operating budget. We have contracts that have built-in CPIs, so they have escalation factors built into them. Some of the contracts, we, we changed through the city council. Rather than have a three-year contract, we pushed it out to a five-year contract. That caught us some better rates. So for, for most of our operating expenditures, it's a, it's a level funding. The last two years, we were asked to decrease our budget by 2%. We, we did that successfully in Public Works, and our level of service, which is graded through a series of, of software applications, didn't drop. We were able to meet the demands. Roughly 250 to 300 cases come into the city for a Public Works-related issue, and, and we were able to meet, meet our goals more often than not, which was, which was nice because we met the budget both years. Snow, snow is snow. Snow is a running five-year average in Boston. Obviously, the winter of '15 increased that a bit, but we did have a surplus last year. Last year was a relatively mild winter. But as those in, in the snow industry know, there's a cost to get the winter going. Not every snowstorm is a snowstorm, it can be snow and ice control. So the good thing about last year's snow budget was we were able to get a percentage of that money back. More often than not, that goes in the general fund. We got close to $4 million back, which we used as one-time capital expenditures to fix sidewalks, roadways. We spent some money on Freedom Trail, so the capital budget, the third budget we manage is, Boston is bonded for $140 million a year. Public Works usually gets a good percentage of that. I always tell the mayor that when we inherited the city, we, we inherited a very poor infrastructure. We had two bridges that failed, the Northern Ave Bridge and the Long Island Bridge, which were huge detriments to our capital expenditures. But for the most part, the Public Works Department gets a lion's share of that. Obviously, the School Department in Boston and the Fight Department. But from that, we, we rebuild roadways and, and sidewalks. So that, that's at the disposal of the chief financial officer, but we, we get a lion's share of that year in and year out, and we appreciate that, but.
And then in terms of, like I said, you may have never had to deal with that consensus building from departments that you don't have control over, you know, in terms of trying to get one balanced budget. But if you've never had to deal with that experience, how you might go about dealing with school, cemetery, library, to try and get a townwide budget that is fair and balanced?
Sure. So obviously, you have to have a relationship with, with the superintendent of schools and, and people that work in the, in the cemetery and the, and the libraries. I've done a very good job in my career of getting to know people, not necessarily, not only at the top, but people at, at the, at the line items where, where the money's spent, to find out what they're looking for, what they need. From our end, it was, it was more of an interdepartmental relationship, but you have to form that relationship and understand what, what it takes for them to do their job, very similar to the, the people out on the street performing public safety or, or any type of, so. I, I know the needs of the School Department change every year, and there's some capital planning that goes, goes involved with schools, libraries, and, you know, cemeteries should maintain themselves more on a flat line. So obviously, that, that getting to know that organization and the people that lead it would go a long way towards helping formulate that budget.
Okay.
Okay, the next question, Mr. Dennehy, is Milton attains special legislation that increase the management responsibility and authority of the town administrator. So please discuss two things. Number one, your understanding of the role of the town administrator and the role of the Board of Selectmen. And number two, if you were to become the next town administrator, how would you communicate and interact with the board?
Okay, so, yeah, I, I have a very fair understanding of, of the new rules in place where the town administrator could, could, for lack of better terms, become the CEO, who deals with the department heads and deals with the budget and deals with all the operating expenditures that go with that and day-to-day operations. The work with, with the three of you, I consider very similar to working with the 13 city councillors and the elected officials I work with now. I think that all of us at this table want to accomplish the same goals of delivering constituent services to our taxpayer base, people that like to visit our, our beautiful town, and obviously, the, the children who, who go to school here and, and the families that raise their kids here. So it's an active conversation. I don't think we'll always get to yes as a group or individually, but I, I think collectively, it's, it's our job to make sure that we're communicating with each other in any, any form that we find comfortable. Usually, face-to-face is, is better. We lose some tone in emails and texts, but I think the ultimate goal is to provide the constituent services to, to the taxpayers again, and just make sure that we're all communicating and executing the policy that, that you set forth.
And this is the second part, that was about communication between the town administrator and the board. So to that specific relationship, how would you handle communication and inner interaction with the, with the three-member, possibly five-member Board of Selectmen?
Sure, so I, I would probably find myself here every Tuesday, or watching it on television for starters. I, I think in, in my day-to-day operations, I spend a lot of time in the city council chambers trying to figure out where certain parts of the, pertinent parts of the town are looking for services. Each part of Milton, I think, is, is a lot like Boston. People on East Milton have different concerns than the people over in Central, on Central Ave. But ultimately, I think that their goals are all similar. So I think a very active conversation with each of you individually and collectively would go a long way towards understanding where you're coming from, what you're hearing from, from the people. I think people only, don't always reach out to the same person for things. You have relationships with people that you've built over the years. I will build relationships with the department heads and other members of the town. I have relationships with some people in the town that my kids go to school with, or we go, we play hockey with, or baseball. So I think that, that dynamic should prove to be a good formula for making sure that, that, that goal is, is reached as, as many times as possible.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I may. Mr. Burns of the previous candidate, you asked what his leadership style was.
Yeah, I did. So, Michael, in terms of operating, should you be the next town administrator, what would your leadership style be related to within departments and outside departments, whether it be with, you know, neighborhood leaders and so forth?
Sure, so I, I take a very hands-on approach. I manage to succeed. If, if my eight divisions in Public Works succeed, then I'm a success, and the mayor's a success. I form relationships with everyone that's willing to form a relationship with me in my departments. I stop by a district yard every morning on my way into work and say hi to the guys, the people, the guys and girls, the people that do the work on, on the road every day. I listen to them. I take their ideas. We run it up the flagpole. There's, there's a wealth of information from the people that actually do the work out in the field and spend time on, on the streets in Milton, day in and day out, that I'd, I'd love to hear from them and find out what they think. I, I've lived here since '07, and I see nothing wrong with this town. This is a beautiful town. The management organization in place has been doing a great job. Our kids are in the school here. We have four children in the school system and, and one more matriculating next year. And I see the way the principals work at the Cunningham School and Dr. Spaulding at Pear School, and that they're very active with the students and the children, and that's the way I am with my approach to, to my job. No constituent complaint goes unheard. A streetlight that might be out in front, in front of someone's house is, could be the most important thing to them, and that's something that should be a priority. So that, that's the approach I take. I, I like to spend a lot of time out in the field.
Thank you.
David has the next question, another long question.
It's a long question, so bear with me. The advent of the internet, personal communication devices and social media have created a new dynamic with which municipalities must deal. Information about government operation travels over the internet with light speed and is viewed by several thousand residents daily. Much of this information may be in part or whole misinformation. Once out there, this misinformation becomes hard to correct. Normal communication channels are slow and do not necessarily reach much of the constituency. Relatively few residents seem to subscribe or follow to the town's social media sites or website. In my opinion, it is extremely important that the town communicate information with its constituents quickly and accurately and over channels that will reach a broad base. What experiences have you had with respect to misinformation getting a life of its own? How have you handled those situations? What are your thoughts on how municipalities should communicate with its constituents? And how have you, in prior positions, ensured effective communications between stakeholders, the residents, and team members, both up and down the organizational chain?
Sure, so I, I agree, it, it is a problem. Social media can grab a hold of an idea or misinformation and, and run wild with it. We, we just recently formed our own Twitter account in the Public Works Department. We have, I think, close to 1,000 followers now. Something like that, I think, goes a long way towards getting your message out there. It's not something that we jam down people's throat. We tell them, we try to be very proactive with it, telling them when construction work is going to take place in their neighborhood, when it doesn't take place in Milton, but when trash is going to be delayed because of a holiday, stuff like that. Some of the misinformation that does go around, we, we tend not to get into the blogging atmosphere and getting into an, an argument with someone in a blog or, or in a Twitter account or anything like that. We, we just continue to produce what's going on in the town from, from each perspective. If you see street lighting trucks out on Saturday morning, they'll be retrofitting LEDs on such and such a street. So I understand the problem. I, I think it has to be controlled. I don't know if there's a, there's a PIO in, in the town that can, can have that duty to make sure that the message is, is getting out, the clear message is getting out. And then I, I think that, that some type of medium where you try to get people to scribe a little more to, to the truth. We had a couple incidents last year in Boston where people opened up fake Twitter accounts, and they were pretending to be us, and we needed to then take action. We actually reached out to Twitter and had the accounts, accounts deleted, but, so I, I understand the issue. I think controlling the situation by creating a pretty robust Twitter or, I don't know if a Facebook page is necessary, but just to, to keep sending the message that you want sent.
Okay, I guess the second part of that is, in your prior positions, how have you ensured the communications between the stakeholders and the residents? Okay, and then also from your department bottom-up?
Sure. So to the constituency, we, we pride ourselves on getting out in front of things with the constituency. I know I've mentioned the word proactive a lot. We do a lot of things prior to where we, we'll, we'll notify the neighborhoods. We have Neighborhood Services coordinators. I, I would envision maybe getting coffee hours with some, some of the civic groups in Milton to stay ahead of some issues, get some feedback from them. But from our end, it's, it's, we use Twitter to get stuff out there to people. We use the Office of Neighborhood Services, and then we have two liaisons that we use through city council and elected officials, so that we're getting their messages back and forth. It's, it's been very productive for us.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Hurley has the next question.
Yes, Michael. As the Town of Milton has now, now has a town manager, former government, with more consolidation of power over the operations of the town and one individual, we realize that there will be many operating efficiencies that will follow. However, with the increased operating efficiencies will also come some diminution of transparency. No longer is virtually every operating aspect of the town being discussed and decided in an open meeting. How will you deal with the balancing of the public's desire and right to know and the need to increase efficiency in the operation of the town?
It's a very good question. I would entertain people coming up to town hall and, and introducing themselves to me, not only to find out what's going on, but to also hear from them and see what they'd, they'd like to see, what, any type of thing, public safety, road and control, and anything that, that may be a problem in, in their area. It's, it's just, it's a good way of engaging the public. You're building relationships with the people. And again, we, we try to get to yes. Sometimes the budget or operations get in the way, and you can't get to that, that answer, but I, I think that's the best way. Communication's the key. I prefer face-to-face, but I don't shy away from technology. We've, we're very tech, we use a lot of technology to create efficiencies in Boston, and, and I think there's an opportunity here to do that.
And the next question is, promoting commercial or mixed-use development and increasing affordable housing are important issues for both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. However, to a large extent, Milton is a built-out community. What ideas would you offer for increasing affordable housing units or Milton's very small commercial tax base?
Okay, so I, I did a little bit of research on the commercial tax rates. Milton is, is very cheap commercially, right? It's about 14% cheaper than some of the surrounding towns. If I saw it correctly, 21 and change per thousand. I think there's an opportunity there. I, I know you said it, it's built out, and, and you don't want to get to that over-development piece, but it, so there's, there's the strategic planning, working with, with the town planner to come up with the alternatives to what, what's the current way. Obviously, it, it's a conundrum everywhere. Boston's overdeveloped. It's just, it's, development is, is a tricky curve. I, I would try to find locations in the town with a planner, if they haven't already. I never would have thought up on Pleasant Street that you could get eight homes in there, but they are. And it looks good, and I appreciate it. But I, I would say, working with the planner and some of the institutional knowledge around here to, to find some space. What they've done with East Milton Square in the last couple of years is great. I think that, that whole central corridor there is really starting to take shape, and I know that, that, that tax base is important to the town.
Okay. And there were no follow-ups, other follow-ups that we need to?
No, the last one, even though I-
Okay. Mr. Hurley?
Yeah, a question I've been asking of the, of the candidates. Doesn't quite as much relate to you, because you are a resident of the town, but, but if you could just talk about what you believe, because this position, there's not a residency requirement, but what you think about the importance of the town administrator- a residency requirement, but what you think about the importance of the town administrator being a resident of the town, or how that impacts the job?
Okay. So, I can answer that two ways, right? Mayor Walsh created an ordinance where I could live in Milton, where I want to raise my family. I work in Boston. I appreciate that. I live in Milton for a reason, right? I love the town. I think it's very important that someone, I'm engaged in the community in many different ways. I'm engaged in the community through sports, through schools, through other extracurricular activities, melodrama right here behind us. And I do think it's very important that the town administrator be in touch with the people. I know pockets of people in East Milton Square, and pockets of people in Indian Cliffs, and pockets of people down on Wendell Park. And I think, again, I keep going back to the fact that different parts of the neighborhood need different requirements, right? We talked about Mattapan Square earlier and the traffic, East Milton Square and the traffic. My neighborhood, I don't know. I don't see too many things wrong with that. There's a couple of streetlights that need to be turned on, and maybe some roadway work. But I think it goes a long way to helping, you know, I have no problem being at Dunkin' Donuts on a Saturday morning, and someone tapped me on the shoulder and saying, hey, do you mind if I have five minutes of your time? I see it happen in city government in Boston, and I appreciate it. So, I think it's, I think it's a valuable asset.
Okay. So, as with the last interview, we're running a little bit early, but we want to give some time, Mr. Dennehy, for you to ask us any questions that you would like to ask the board.
Yeah. So, just from a lending capacity or a borrowing capacity, what is the town's, how much can the town borrow these days annually?
Why don't we defer that question to our Capitol Committee Chairman?
I'm not positive what the legal lending limit is. We're not even close to it. So, we do have plenty of bonding capacity within the town. That being said, we try and, because with bonding also comes debt service, and debt service is part of the operating budget. So, we try and keep our debt service requirement to about 2% of the tax levy, you know, and that fluctuates a little bit, but as we look at capital projects, as we look at things to be bonded, we kind of project them out and see what that does as a percentage of the anticipated tax levy, and try to use that formula.
So, to my knowledge, most of the schools are very new, right?
They're getting older now, but, I mean, we're getting to the point where it's starting to, those are starting to come, not the schools themselves, but components.
Okay.
HVAC and roofs and that kind of thing are starting to work their way into the five-year capital plan.
So, that, okay, that was my next question. That could become part of the capital plan. Snow budget? I know winter's coming soon.
When we get our first load of salt, the budget's gone.
Oh, okay. Yeah. And the shed is full. Right. Yeah, I know that feeling. So, it's a little different than the dollars we get.
Yes.
Yes.
A lot different.
Yeah. What else? I have a couple of questions.
Although, to that point, I think we could add to that, because you mentioned a five-year rolling average for--
Yeah.
I think you did, for the snow budget in the city of Boston is based on that. I believe that's what we base it on as well. Am I correct or not correct in saying that?
In our DPW budget, we only put, I think it's $125,000, $150,000 in the budget, and then, at the end of the year, we'll use either free cash if we go over, or we do the 3% rule from other department budgets.
Or we do the ability to make up the deficit.
Or we make it up in the next--
It's one of the things you can run a deficit in.
And you can make it up in the next year. But historically, we've only budgeted about $125,000, $150,000.
Oh, I thought the $125,000 was kind of based, well, I guess if that's what we're doing every, for the five-year, for the foreseeable backwards, and that is the five-year rolling average. But we do have other options, as the town administrator said, to cover the deficits.
Right. Along those lines, Chapter 90 money, right? We use that money very well in Boston, and it's unfortunately become part of our formula every year. And it shouldn't be, but it is, and we use it.
Chapter 90 money in Milton ranges from high $600,000 to, you know, in some years, $800 or so. So, it's in that range. Doesn't do too many roads. We struggle trying to find other sources of revenue to keep up with road improvements and road repairs. We've been bonding some of it over the past few years, you know, as formula permits, but it's a struggle.
Last one, I think. How would the town go about securing recycling barrels for its constituency? Would it come through, come through the board first, or is that something that would go through the warrant committee, or what? Basically, what I'm thinking of is, with the delta involved with trash and recycling these days, it's about $70 difference for every ton of trash and every ton of recycling. If you provide a recycling container at every home at a cost, obviously, to the town, you can make that money back quickly enough. And you're promoting recycling, right? You can get 64-gallon barrels that are pretty hard to fill. Most stuff is recyclable these days. I think it would provide an incentive to the tax base to recycle more and divert that delta that's caused by the solid waste conversion.
We are single-stream, which has helped tremendously.
It's huge, yeah.
We have a surprisingly very high, and I think because of the sticker system with respect to trash--
Page to throw, right.
It tends to push the--
Promote recycling.
Recycling, yeah. So, I forget what the rate is, but it's a pretty high rate. We do provide recycled bins, but those are just the--
The smaller ones, yeah.
The small bins. We don't provide 30-to-gallon--
Gallon ones, no.
No, okay. Just a thought, yeah. I see some of the other cities, other towns doing, and I know Brantley did it, and Dedham's done it. They've given both, they've given both trash and recycling carts, 64 gallons wheeled. It's containerized.
One thing I've gotten questions on before, and it's difficult to do with the pay to throw, is the one-man--
One-man tippers, yeah.
Yeah. Which would be nice, you know, in the town to have, but--
Does Boston have those?
But I think, yeah.
We try them out in the western part. There's one that works in High Park. It's pretty, up on Fairmont Hill. It's impressive. They have off-street parking, so you need the off-street parking to go down some of the streets in Beacon Hill and try to pull these things between two-park cars is not recommended.
Yeah, I can see that.
But I think that you as a town administrator and us as a policy and advisory board would have to look into that, to see the cost and the benefits towards that, and see if it would make sense to taxpayers, you know?
Yeah. Just, I mean, it's trying to do more with less, right? Trying to generate revenue, like, we got paid for recycling last month, and we paid $72 per ton, right? It's just some, another way to create some revenue in the town. And one more thing, I have seen some LED conversions going on in the town. On Reed Still Road, they got past a hospital there. There's a huge savings with that. Eversource and all the relationships that we've made, there's refunds and incentives, and you make your money back very quickly on those, both with the energy savings, the refund incentive that they'll send you, and then the maintenance costs. If these lights are going to last 10, 15, 20 years, it's less Public Works time out there changing light bulbs. But just some ideas to kind of bounce around that, where you can generate some revenue or lower your expenditures.
Do you have any other questions for the board?
No, just, I'm glad I'm here today. Resident of the town, like I said, almost nine years. My wife and I love it. We're not going anywhere. I think I'd be a great asset to an already well-oiled machine, and it's, I think it's a natural progression in my career. I started off with the budget. I worked my way into operations and policy, and I would love to join the team.
That sounded like a closing statement, but I neglected to mention that if you'd like to--
[laughing]
I certainly do so. So, if there's anything else you would like to add, feel free, but--
No, just thanks again. I'd just like to thank the selection committee as well, that this process tonight and the process that got me here were very thorough, very professional, and the town should be very proud of the way they went about the selection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well done.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Dennehy. We appreciate your time tonight, and thank you for applying for the position and going through the process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Nice job. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Good night.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Nice to meet you.
All right. We'll just open the door. So, it's now 9:08, and we finished both interviews a little bit early. So, we, I don't have the agenda right in front of me, but the only other item on our agenda was a possible discussion in selection. We had a short discussion about that at the beginning. I don't know how the members feel. Why don't I turn it over to one or both of you, one of you to start the, to start? And then, we all maybe talk about whether we feel we're ready to discuss it or vote tonight.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm ready to vote or not, and I guess of the two candidates we had here tonight, I thought, you know, in terms of relevant experience, in terms of town administrator experience, Anthony was probably the stronger of the two, you know, that Michael, you know, kept going back to where his experience base is of Public Works. But I'm a little concerned that his experience, not that he couldn't learn it, but it may be learning on the job, a lot more than the first candidate that we saw.
Yeah, you know, I, so in listening to both candidates, both bring, you know, a wide variety of experience.
Absolutely, they do.
They've earned it, they've gotten to their levels, respectively.
Yep.
I look at Milton right now, as I see it, one that I ran my campaign on, as being one that needs more of a connections to its residents, okay? So, I think that both of them bring that, you know, in terms of providing value and providing, you know, technology so that people get information quicker, that we become more effective and transparent. You know, I think that, you know, from a perspective of town government, I think that Mr. Marino provides more experience, I think, from, you know, having been in the system, a different system than the city of Boston.
Yep.
Yet I think that Mr. Dennehy provides a real high level of pressure-driven service.
Yeah, I agree with that.
One that we've been faced with recently, you know, under a number of, you know, whether it be airplanes, and whether it be, you know, development, whether it be things of that nature, and basic town services, where I believe that we can really make strides. So, you know, for me, while it may be, you know, one has more experience, you know, in the town, in town government, the other may have more experience in quick fix in terms of needs. So, you know, I, you know, as I sit here, I think about, you know, my analysis on, you know, weighing the pros and the cons of both. And I'd like to, you know, continue to look through my notes and deliberate a little bit.
And I do, I do agree with constituent services. I think that Michael would be very strong in that area. I think they both, they both during the interview process kind of brought that out. I mean, I'm kind of a techno geek a little bit, too. I've seen, I've seen those dashboard, you know, things in term, for budgets and ways to get information out there, and they're very, very impressive. I was impressed that a town half our size has it, and we don't. But they've been out there for several years now, and basically, you just click on a, you click, you know, you're online, you look at the whole town, you can drill it down, you can look at the police department, you look at all the information that we have on paper, it's all up there on the screen, you know, almost in real time. It's pretty impressive. So, I like that. I like the idea of what he was talking about, which is something we've already been talking about, in terms of looking at the systems that do the minutes and the agendas, and the town of Westwood uses it, and many, many towns use it. We don't. You know, again, just better ways of communication, quicker communication, more efficient communication.
Not to get too off-topic, but I'm not sure I understood what you meant, a system that does minutes and agendas?
Yeah, the Westwood--
It's a software program.
Yeah, it's a software program.
It is.
And it works very well, so that you're, you know, the, again, rather than emailing, you know, the board packets, they would go into the system, and you're just going to pick it up. But that same system will also deliver the agenda directly out to anybody that wants the agenda. They wouldn't have to come in here and pick it up.
And you're saying that's what, one of the, I missed, one of the candidates mentioning that.
Yeah. Again, Hannah used it.
Okay.
So, you know, I was impressed by those two things, I guess, but--
Your thoughts, Mayor?
I don't disagree with what either of you said. I think we have two good candidates that have been recommended by the search committee with different experiences. They would bring different strengths. One is a more traditional town government candidate, another is kind of an outside-the-box candidate, but they both have their strengths, as you both just spoke to very well. My preference would be to take this up at our next meeting, because I would like an opportunity to watch the tapes. Sometimes you see things differently when you're sitting in the room versus when you're watching it on TV. And hear again what they had to say and digest it a little bit more, and have a follow-up discussion at that point, but--
Fine with that.
Yeah, I'd be agreeable to that as well.
Okay. Then, our next meeting is the second. Is there any, I would be fine with deferring until that date, but is there any sense among the board that we'd like to meet sooner than that in order to make a decision? And again, that would go to everyone's availability. I know the second, the first is not an option.
Yeah. The second is when?
Wednesday. Second is a Wednesday.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see there really would be any opportunity for them anyways. So, I mean, the second is fine with me.
Yeah, well, okay. So, Thursday, we're too late to post for Thursday. It really would be Monday, which is Halloween, so that's not an option.
We could all come to the meeting in costume.
Wouldn't that be fun? Laurel Emily's costume from the Playground Planner's Masquerade Ball. Okay. So, we're probably looking at the second. I don't think anyone would want to meet on Friday.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it serves us best to think about this and to look at the tape and to really, you know, make a sound decision, because I think that they both bring an awful lot to the table, and, you know, we're charged with making the best decision for our taxpayers and the future of the town. So, I think that, I think that sounds good.
And it's such an important decision.
Sure is.
All right, then, it's 9:16. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.